We're ready. So, for all of you that are still visiting. Is this on? I don't think anyone's ready to have the workshop yet. Yeah, what time is this 9:30 meeting gonna start? So if we could get the crowd to maybe just a low murmur, we will start our workshop. Robert, I'm yelling about as loud as I can yell right now.
Alright, I think we're ready to start.
Thank you. I don't think we've ever had this many people here to hear something on wireless network.
I hate to break up all of the great conversations back there. Maybe we'll open the meeting and then let you start re-engaging back there. It sounds like you're having too much fun. But we're going to go ahead and get started on our workshop. And I think my voice will last the length of this meeting. And I would just encourage all of you to keep your distance. I'm not sure how many communicable diseases I might be carrying around. But I'm here. Maybe Mary Beth will come up and speak to me. I think she's the one that got me sick, actually. So we'll call the... We'll call the meeting to order. The first item is approval of the minutes of February 19th. Any changes or corrections? Seeing none, I move that we approve the regular meeting February 19th minutes.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 7-0. Any items on the consent that need to be pulled for discussion or clarification? Seeing none, I move we approve consent agenda items 1 through 16.
Second?
Motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 7-0. Do we have someone to present the board of bid contracts?
Good morning. I'm here to present the formal bid report from the board of bids dated February 25th. First bid is lateral 8 main 15, stormwater sewer number 23 to serve Valencia addition. Recommended award is McCalliff excavation for group 1 for $76,743.25. Group 2 for $86,459.60 for an aggregate total of $163,202.85. The next bid we have is water distribution system to serve Valencia addition phase 2. Recommended award is Dutton Construction and Plumbing for $30,870.50. Next bid we have is water distribution system to serve Firefly Way addition. Recommended award is McCullough excavation for group 1 of $78,213.20. Group 2 of $89,113.80 for an aggregate total of $167,327. Next bid we have is downtown fiber and signalization upgrade. We are deferring that to the March 4th board of bids date. Next bid is stormwater drain number 443 to serve Fox Run addition. Recommended award is Unruv excavation for $148,628.79. Next bid is water distribution system to serve Reed Commercial addition. Recommended award is Dutton Construction and Plumbing for $13,859. Last engineering bid we have is paving for the 2018 OP3 CIP 127 street repairs. Recommended award is Conspec Incorporated for the engineer's estimate of $449,800. First purchasing bid we have is combo high-pressure storm cleaner. Recommended award is key equipment and supply for the base bid of $439,799. Group 1, option 1 is a deduct of $141,000. Next purchasing bid we have is grit removal services at water treatment plant. Recommended award is Waste Connections of Kansas for $86 per ton. And the last engineering bid we have is neighborhood cleanup and bulky waste services. Recommended award is primary contractor of Waste Connections of Kansas for $67,721. And the secondary contractor of Waste Management of Kansas for $75,212.50. That's all the bids, and I'll stand for any questions.
Anyone have any questions on the award of bids? Seeing none, I would move that we approve the bids as mentioned. Motion and second. Any further discussion? The only thing I might add, Bob, is this is a... I appreciate getting these lists presented to us in this fashion. The only thing we might look at next is a quarterly summary and break it down by water sewer infrastructure, streets, just so we can recap to the community. These are major investments that we're making in our community. And I think it's nice to continue to share with the community the kinds of investments that we're making on a regular basis.
You just want that on infrastructure projects?
Yeah, just on the infrastructure project. Thank you very much. So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Our next item is council member agenda items. We have travel for Councilmember Clinton and Johnson and Tuttle to attend the National League of Cities Conference in Washington DC. I move that we approve that travel expense as listed.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. The next one is for myself and Cindy and Councilmember Frye to attend at the tail end of that same meeting to visit with our folks on the hill. This is our opportunity, obviously, to meet with not only our federal delegation but many of the different department heads. And I... This is a new strategy that we've adopted about three years ago, Robert. And I think it works very well to meet with the various department directors on the hill. So I need a motion to...
I'd like to take the recommended motion to approve the travel expenditures.
Thank you. And I'll second that. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Any appointments today?
Mayor, I have five from District 2.
Okay.
For the Police Fire Retirement Board, Joseph Kui. For District Advisory Board, Joseph Getz. For District Advisory Board, Dee Nyswenger. For the Library Board, Charles Swartz. And for the Wichita-Sedna County Animal Advisory Board, Adrian Clark.
And if you could hand that list in to the clerk along with their contact information.
I did. I sent it yesterday.
You're way ahead of me. For the person that got me sick, you're a great point. Looks like you're feeling pretty good about it, too. Any other appointments? I move that we approve the appointments as read.
Second?
Motion and second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Any comments before we head into our workshop? Alright. We do not have an executive session, so we can adjourn today's meeting. I move that we adjourn the council meeting.
Second?
Motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously, and we'll turn it over to you, Robert.
Mayor, we have three items today for you. The first item is one that's been discussed for a long period of time, and that's future of C2 and specifically on the performing arts side. You appointed a citizens advisory committee about a year ago to take a look at the facility and to come back with some alternatives and recommendations on how to proceed. And that committee is now ready to make its recommendations public. With that, I'm gonna turn it over to John DeAngelo for a couple intro comments, and then Mary Beth Jarvis will give the committee's report.
Mayor, Council, John DeAngelo. We... I've had the pleasure of working with this committee since about a year now. We've been doing the studying of both the previous work that had been done by the city as well as additional work that had been requested throughout the process. And today, we bring that conclusion. And I think Mary Beth is here to walk you through their recommendation, and then certainly we're here to answer your questions. Mary Beth?
Good morning. I was given strict instructions to stay behind the lectern. So if I seem to be restricted in motion, I apologize. I am delighted to be here and have been honored to be a part of this effort for the last 12 months. I appreciate the council and the mayor's time this morning. And I am incredibly grateful for the time over the last year of 11 of my fellow citizens. We, in some cases, met each other for the first time about a year ago. A number of the committee members are here today. Raise your hands if you would. The talented and incredibly diversely capable folks that have been a part of this effort that have given hundreds and hundreds of hours, each of them, to this effort on behalf of our fellow citizens. We studied. We got smarter in areas we didn't start smart. The bankers learned from the cellist. The facility manager taught the lawyer a few things. I learned from everyone. And it was truly an example of exactly how a community effort ought to work. You ought to study hard. You ought to listen even harder. You ought to make yourselves available to your fellow citizens. You ought to examine the facts. You ought to dig for more facts when those before you are incomplete or need continued scrutiny. And I just am so grateful for the time that these citizens spent on behalf of all of our neighbors and frankly, the present and future members of our community that can benefit from, as the manager said, resolving this issue that has been much discussed, much studied, and of much importance to our community going forward. So our committee steps into the history of performing arts and public venues that's been, for a city of our longevity, incredibly stable. When we first got established as a community in the late 1800s, it just wasn't that long before the forum, a massive at the time, a signature project for the city, went into action. And 50 years or so after that, as we were getting ready to start the second century of our history as a city, Century 2 came along. It's interesting because that pivot point has a lot of echoes in the place we find ourselves today. The forum was celebrated, appreciated. Folks had memories tied in it and history enmeshed in their lives and their community's life. And there was much wailing and gnashing of teeth that an institution like that might need to yield to the future. And Century 2 was an incredible vision, 360-degree circle that radiated its architecture and its influence in all directions around the city. But time marches on, and by the mid 80s, that pie... The pie pieces of Century 2 were no longer sufficient to handle even that era's convention activities. And so the Bob Brown Expo Hall was constructed. So for the architectural purists, that was another occasion to grieve just a little because we put a box on the south end of that radiating circle. By the mid 1990s, we added to the capability of the area with the Hyatt Regency Convention Hotel. And now, we find ourselves at a juncture where the future, the decades-long, the next generation's future of specifically of interest to this committee are performing arts, facility needs, and capabilities are at the forefront. And so into this history, we dove. And frankly, in some cases, that included diving into the bowels of our 50-year-old Century 2. And we saw... We saw a story of two sides of a coin. For those that sit in the seats of Concert Hall or that participate in events at Century 2, they are often, and we have our incredible performing arts organizations and other local groups to thank for this, seeing excellence. The innovative and talented and creative processes that result in amazing performances and a history of those in C2 is, you know, is in fact excellence in action. The problem is that the journey to that seat and to that performance was neither excellent for the attendee who passed through the Hall of Beige and maybe stopped at a restroom that hadn't been touched in a while. But nor was that journey excellent for the performing arts organizations that were bringing that product to life. There are some aspects of Century 2 that have been limitations really since the beginning. The sound bleed between the sections of the facility have made the vision for multiple events ongoing not quite as able to be realized as was initially imagined. Over time, those limitations have grown. The 1960s-era trucks that could drive down into that loading dock in the basement, the hydraulic elevator that lifted that equipment up from the basement. Now, the truck ramp doesn't fit today's trucks, and that hydraulic elevator sometimes works. And the production areas, the rehearsal space, the wing space, the fly space, the backstage areas, the equipment that's from lighting to otherwise that supports modern performances, the technology that is seen, that is part of expectations for today's performing arts industry is... Cannot be supported in Century 2 as it currently stands. The makeshift shops for doing some of the most creative and education-oriented work of our performing arts organizations have been, you know, bubblegummed and superglued together over the years. And we ultimately have gotten to the point where serving patrons, particularly those with... That have the greatest need for accessibility and accommodations is not being... They are not being served well. And amenities that have become commonplace and hoped for in other markets and by our own citizenry just can't be executed in Century 2 as it currently stands. None of this in whole is news to anyone. We've known, as we've studied this issue for the past eight to 10 years, that there were compromises and limitations with which we were living for this amount of time. I do think the committee found as a surprise the extent of those limitations, the amount of bending over backwards and MacGyver-ing that our performing arts organizations have to do on a daily basis. And ultimately, the news that has prompted such... Most of our dialogue out in the community and our action towards today's recommendations is what the value that we are losing as a community, not just today but into the future, based on the limitations of our current facility. So Century 2 as it currently stands is less capable than modern standards and is maybe, while not obvious to everyone, these behind-the-scenes issues, these structural and capability issues are having a real effect on what arts and culture productions can grace this city and what... And we don't even know the future developments we're missing out on today. When we can't bring in a 30-year-old show and aren't even reasonably in the running for today's modern shows, that process we can expect will consider... Will continue, and we end up at a juncture where action is necessary, which is a good thing because this committee, this community, as we have heard loud and clear, is ready for action. Starting back as long as five years ago, surveys and public engagement efforts brought in an overwhelming sense of energy and value appreciation in this area from our community. I mean, you can't get 85% of a community to agree that the sky is blue. And yet, for five years running, vast majorities of our citizens have understood the importance of reinvigorating these facilities for our performing arts in Wichita. Project Wichita's work throughout the year 2018 was inspiring and informative to our committee and frankly, to folks around the city. 3,500 folks participated in their focus groups, 14,000 took the surveys. An overwhelming belief that the city must change and must embark on transformational initiatives and projects in order to retain and attract the next generation, the single point of most clarity of all questions asked, of all community engagement efforts of Project Wichita. And a large majority believe that it is essential or very important to invest in modern performing arts capabilities for our community. And that doesn't even count the folks that said it was important. This is just the upper end of those folks who believe that that time has come. And it's interesting. It is the breadth of the community that believes it is time to invest in our regional core, in our riverfront area, in our downtown, and in projects and initiatives that have the capability of transforming our community for the next 50 years. So our community engagement for the past three-plus months, we've had 12 members of the community that were out and about. We have seen face-to-face thousands of citizens. We had almost 5,000 respond to a survey we put out, a chance to hear their feedback. Of those respondents, what we found most important and frankly inspirational, 3,500 citizens took the time to type out with their fat fingers their hopes, their desires, their dreams for our community in this area going forward. It was funny, when we went into this process, I think we as a group and certainly I individually was told to expect... was told to expect certain things about the responses and the opinions of our citizenry. Everyone over a certain age would think this way, everyone under a certain age would have this point of view. We would find a lot of our citizenry that was firm in their opinions and had no interest in listening to information or data that might be aimed at rounding out their knowledge of the situation or their opinion on our path forward. And the inspirational and great thing is that we didn't find that to be the case at all. I had folks that would start a conversation saying, "I was here the first day it opened", and end the conversation with, "But we need to do what's best for our community." We found thoughtful, engaged citizens that started out with points of view and have ideas, memories, and appreciation for our past, but the fundamental core message of the vast majority of the citizens with which we interacted was that we need to be thoughtful, we need to be strategic, we need to be future-minded, and we need to move. So we'll get to that when it comes to our recommendations and some of the key findings that fueled those. I think the specific renovate versus build debate showed that we do have some folks in the community that are just about that which might be cheapest. We have another segment of the community whose adherence to the existing structure is strong, though frankly, they've never had an alternative presented before them. But even without renderings, even without a vision for alternatives, the largest portion of those folks with whom we interacted and that took the time to respond to us are in favor of moving forward with distinctive facilities and a project around which our community could build pride. So this was the committee's task. And frankly, I think some of this will be news to folks. We were to do our homework, we were to create homework, we were to listen, we were to engage, and we were to compose a path forward that, based on our listening, that based on our research, we believed could be executable, could get across the finish line, evaluate the feasibility of renovating Century Two for performing arts or building a new performing arts center. We had to make the assumption that zero operational funds or borrowing authority was available for this, and therefore, any recommendation we came up with needed to have a path forward to engaging the community in some way to make funds available. And we needed to get that community support gauged to a certain extent and understood as best we could. We were not just to referee the "taste great, less filling" debate of teardown Century Two or not. Our role was to try to understand the best answer for performing arts going forward. We believe the recommendations that we bring here today have the right combination of moxie and practicality, of homage to history and vision for the future, to result in significant win and community momentum to move forward, such that we can add to our community's cultural health and economic vitality going forward. So here it is, here's the slide, we'll stay on this a while, I'm not going to read it to you, you all can do that. But basically, our recommendation has four parts, the first of which is, in fact, the punchline. We believe that the right answer for performing arts for our community's future is to build a new, distinctive, customized performing arts center, a signature project for our community. We believe it belongs in our community's regional core, our riverfront, the area between Kellogg Water Menage up to Douglas, between the river and Main Street, the city property there that currently includes facilities contemplated for further redevelopment, that we believe is our community's front yard, and we need to develop that east bank of the river now to be integrated and connective with the west bank and the wonderful developments that are taking place there. In order to make that happen, we'll talk a little bit about siting in a moment, but ultimately, I will tell you, the committee stopped short of having a singular or primary site recommendation for this facility because we would like the contemplation of that land development, of the community asset that is that property, to be thought about in a more comprehensive and integrated way than our committee had the capability to do on its own. Signature projects, transformational projects shouldn't happen in silos. And as we get to number two of our recommendations, we do believe with haste, within the next two months, the city should initiate an RFP to begin finding a site selection and concept development team to design a new performing arts facility. That RFP should include these deliverables, a proposed design that achieves the building program outlined in 2014, but also is customized to the area, to our community, and that is in fact done with distinction and excellence. We want included in that process of site analysis and design of the facility to be an analysis of alternative uses for Century Two. We are recommending a new build, we are not recommending at this time that we've got to take down Century Two. We got, of the 3,500 inputs from our fellow community members, there was a tremendous amount of energy and good ideas for where Century Two's capabilities could be utilized going forward. I'm not sure the aquarium with the whale in the middle is the leading contender, but citizens have ideas about ways that that building could be used for the value of our community. But, and this is a but that the committee feels strongly about and that additional homework will have to make clear, the building program devised in 2014 and the needs of a modern performing arts facility going forward encompass about 40% of the current footprint of the Century Two round building. That means that the current Century Two takes up a lot of space, and it's really valuable space. And we think that the community should have an opportunity not only to evaluate alternative uses for that giant building, but also an alternative vision for the space on which it sits and the Kennedy Plaza area to its north. That has the potential to be a public gathering space that is engaging, that is game-changing for how we come together as a community and how families can interact downtown year-round and when we have events. But we haven't had a vision for that, we haven't given the community a reasonable choice, let alone an inspiring one. And we think that's got to be a part of this effort that's endeavored by the city over the next couple of months and into the future. We also believe that the site analysis for the new performing arts facility ought to be integrated with a comprehensive look at that riverfront, that regional core, the enthusiasm and energy and prioritization by organizations from the Chamber of Commerce to the Greater Wichita Partnership to Project Wichita, who have named not just quality-of-life initiatives, of which this is a signature one, but this endeavor in particular, both the rejuvenation of our performing arts facility and convention facility, but also a comprehensive analysis of that area and how it can be best utilized to add value to the city going forward. So there will be private sector help, partnership with the city, and we believe that that integrated thought process can move forward with a combination of public and private energy, resources, and leadership. Building off of that point, given that the performing arts do not have a dedicated or reasonably anticipatable funding stream or borrowing stream from existing city sources, we do believe that there will have to be a look out into the community for a dedicated public sector funding stream. And we expect, and wanting to respect this process, needed to come in and present to you our recommendations and findings before we move forward on this, but we expect that there will be, that there is significant private sector enthusiasm to become a coalescing factor and a leadership force in educating and engaging the community on a campaign towards the approval of a public funding stream that could be dedicated to this project. Could be dedicated just to performing arts, or it could go broader, we leave that to the team that would help get this over the finish line. We do believe that effort should happen quickly. Beyond the 60-day movement towards an RFP, the beginning of design and siting of the performing arts facility, the integrated look at this front yard of Wichita, the analysis of potential uses for Century Two itself or the space underneath it for the best value to our community, all of that needs to keep moving because it is clear that eight or 10 years of studying this have got the community ready to act and skeptical of further delay. So the public sector, private sector cooperation that it's going to take to move that along over the course of the next year will be significant, but we see that enthusiasm, and we see that energy, and we see that leadership amassing as we speak. Last part of our recommendation is that there be a citizen advisory committee maintained throughout the completion of this project for consultation and advice and expert help. We are not saying that the exact 12 people that have spent the last 12 months of their lives with an additional full-time job are the right composition for that committee. We think we need to add expertise to that committee as we turn a building program and conceptual designs into a final design. We need performing arts expertise, those organizations need to be represented, the folks that operate this facility and the arts and culture staff of the city need to be participants in a full and robust way. But we do believe that the community's thirst for transparency and continued citizen dialogue will extend beyond the public engagement that we recommend, as you can see, as a part of the analysis and development of a site and facility design, but also citizen engagement throughout the execution of the process of the project in order to keep this moving forward. This is an overhead look, and we may come back to this as we get into discussions. For those that don't look at this day-in, day-out planning River Fest, and for those that aren't a part of our committee, who don't see this burned into their retinas for the last 12 months, this is the area of which we speak. The committee, as I mentioned in the earlier slide, has spent a fair amount of time eyeballing that space to the west of Century Two between the current round building and the river, remembering that a modern performing arts capability can be built in about 40% of the space of the current Century Two building. We assess through our educated but still not expert eyes that that would be not only a suitable and large enough, but dramatic and engaging site for a facility of this nature. That said, again, we want this whole section of territory in the dotted lines to be examined with thoroughness and cohesiveness for the other purposes and the other value that can be gained from it, so we don't want to rule out other sites that could be appropriate for this kind of a signature project for the community. We've got some pictures, because you're sick of hearing me talk for a moment. These are pictures of performing arts facilities built to modern capabilities at exactly the kind of scale and care and standard of excellence that we envision and that is priced into the build plan and the scenarios for a new build that have been discussed and researched for Wichita. These designs, LA, you know, I'm not saying the next thing we build ought to have silver skin and look like a different kind of spaceship, but I do think that the community's voice is clear. They are not interested in meh, they are not interested in a gray box, they are interested in a structure that can be a signature addition to Wichita's skyline, an excellent example of pride-worthy community investment and forward-thinking that fundamentally includes within it the modern capabilities that we need, but customized to Wichita, not mimicking anybody else. And as mentioned earlier, we think that the possibility for the territory currently occupied by the crumbling concrete of Kennedy Plaza and the footprint of Century Two could be used as our community's signature gathering space, engaging daily, weekly, and monthly for citizens around the region and activatable. Chicago's Millennium Park, of which you see some pictures here, whether you're a family that just comes in to trapeze in the fountain or take your picture next to the Bean Cloudgate, which in a millisecond became the symbol of, hey, I went to Chicago, despite that city's long history and interesting skyline. Even if you never go next door to the Frank Gehry-designed amphitheater and attend a fine arts event, you as a community member can enjoy a space like this, and we think that that kind of space ought to be given due consideration as we look at the value of the territory currently occupied in that dotted line. So how did we reach our recommendations? These were some of our key findings, and they fall into two buckets. Part one is we heard clearly from the community the value that they place and the excellence that they see in our performing arts organizations, and they want that to continue. There's an economic value to our community that's been documented, and that's a part of it, but it goes well beyond that. The community pride that's been engendered, the brag-worthy leadership that our performing arts organizations show regionally and nationally, that is an absolute point of community pride and description, and folks firmly believe that these organizations ought to have the facilities that allow them to continue that excellence and that uniqueness. And we'll talk a little bit about the build plan and how that intends to do it. The citizens want our arts and culture life to thrive, and they believe that we need to leap forward to the facilities that will allow that to happen. Doing nothing or other small patch projects, folks believe that that time has come and gone. We have thoughtfully looked at the options and kicked cans down the road while we thought and did small repairs and patches while that was prudent, but the time for large action has come. And this last part of the learnings became clear to us just in our initial months of getting together. Under no circumstances should we consider a scenario that requires our performing arts organizations to go dark for a season or any period of time. Looking both at their unique operations and at communities around the country, there is no other facility in Wichita that can allow these organizations to do what they do at the level they do it, and we cannot go from hampering or slowly strangling our performing arts organizations to killing them by causing them to go dark and cease operations for a period of time. So we need to bridge to the future with continued use of the existing facilities, and that is compatible with our recommendation that a new facility be built. We keep the existing facilities operating till we're ready to turn over the keys of the next generation's performing arts facility. The key findings continued here in the second bucket. This was the comparison of remodel versus build new scenarios. Building a new distinctive facility, we believe, is the cost-effective and achievable way to get to a future, a robust and promising future for our performing arts facilities. We've got a current estimate that's been updated even since 2014, that building a facility of the kind of caliber you saw pictured in that previous slide is about $155 million. That building plan is sound, though it will continue to need to be tweaked and customized even more to our local needs, but I will tell you this, it includes about 17,000 square feet of space needed for the unique educational and product development missions of our current performing arts organizations, principally Music Theater of Wichita, but all of them, and we believe that those capabilities shouldn't be compromised, and the building plan includes them from the get-go. And that $155 million gets you the new facility at a level of excellence with a distinctive design and the kind of finishes and capabilities that will serve us well into the future. $20 million or so above the top of that, you'll get a parking structure that can be decided as the community weighs in on site selection, and we look at the overall footprint of that dotted line area to see what parking needs are there and will be met. And then there's site development, which is a to-be-determined number above that, depending, again, on how a new facility is then incorporated into that riverfront property, into the rest of the site, and what all need to be done. The current renovation scenario that was done by a national firm of experts paired with local expertise as well, has outlined a remodel that would put the modern performing arts capabilities that we need into Century Two. The cost estimate for that project is $252 million. That particular scenario violates the roof line, there's additional work being done even as we speak to try to come up with a remodel scenario that doesn't violate the roof line, that instead kind of goes down and in a bit to bring those capabilities. The committee, there's not preliminary cost estimates for that scenario yet, but the committee is right now not seeing that it's realistic that a project of that scope and scale, getting the similar capabilities as were enumerated in the $252 million project, could come in substantially lower than that without compromise. More importantly, though, the input that we've gotten from citizens and our engagement with citizens and citizen leaders throughout the community is that the appetite for new and distinctive, the appetite for visionary, the appetite for excellence and a signature project that provides a new addition to Wichita's skyline and that creates from the ground up a right-sized, modern-capable performing arts facility. up a right-sized, modern-capable performing arts facility far exceeds the enthusiasm for leading a public campaign to fund a renovation scenario or contributing to, as private donors, a campaign to fund a renovation scenario. And we believe, as part of our charter, we were to come back with a solution that could get over the finish line. And we see the momentum and the energy and the passion behind a new build as being a substantial factor in whether or not the project can get over the finish line, and therefore have solidified the build-new recommendation, even as continued homework has been done on the renovation possibilities. In summary, I think this, we believe this recommendation, unanimous from the committee of 12 after our one year of homework and engagement with the community, acknowledges the desire by our fellow citizens to not just preserve, but to enable greatness for the future in our performing arts organizations, and also acknowledges our community's appetite for excellence and pride-worthy projects that can help transform and continue the progress we've always already made in our regional core, in our downtown, in our riverfront area. It also allows, then, for a thoughtful evaluation with real alternatives expressed and articulated and visualized for Century Two, the building reuse, or for Century Two's current land, that front yard of Wichita, and whether or not as a public gathering space, that can be a vision that gets the passion of the community excited and can be something that adds value for all of our citizenry. Fundamentally, we believe this is clear, executable, bold, and the lowest-cost path forward, and we believe it's the right solution for our community, for future generations. We are excited to have served. I am grateful, again, for the opportunity to serve alongside the 12 members of the committee, and frankly, to serve this mayor and council, who find themselves in a leadership role at such an exciting point for our community. We want to add to that momentum, and we believe that our research, our homework, and our engagement with the community has set aside, set out a path that will allow for real action, real invigorating improvement for our community, that will take continued community engagement and input, but is on the path to a future of which we can all be proud. So thank you for your time this morning. Happy to take questions, but I'm also, my committee's got my back in two ways. First of all, if I forgot something, I'm sure they'll chime in. And secondly, as we take questions, there may be pockets of expertise around the committee that can answer it better than I. So thank you very much.
Mary Beth, thank you. And to the committee members that are here and those that are not, I truly appreciate the work and dedication that you have taken on over this past year. Fortunately, this council certainly isn't afraid to take on big things. I think it shows in what we're trying to do to transform this city. I also appreciate the committee's understanding of the iconicness of Century Two. And we'll say this, so that everyone hears us. Any recommendation that came forward that said we're tearing down Century Two would pit too many people in this community that has fallen in love with the iconicness of that building. And I think that we have to be very careful, moving forward, to ensure that we don't pit neighbor against neighbor, community against community, and what is the best approach moving forward. And so with the committee's understanding that we should keep Century Two at this point, I think it gives this certainly an opportunity to look at this best option. The only thing I would caution everyone on is we don't know the cost of building a renovated Century Two yet. We're working on that. We have a lot of issues that we need to get addressed before we will have a cost figure, and so I think it's unfair, at this point, it would just be conjecture, to tell the committee or the community that this is what the cost is of a remodeled Century Two, or that it couldn't be iconic. But I appreciate the committee's understanding of what many in the community said, we want to be bold. I don't disagree that we want to be bold. I'm not sure we can stay to the timeline the committee lined out. I had not understood that it needed to be done in such a quick fashion, because we're still working on some information I think's critically important to this community. And I'm not sure we can get that done in 60 days' time. And so there's some things that we need to step through before we can undertake any proposition of this nature.
No, totally respect that point of view. I think two thoughts. The years that have been spent studying this issue have included clever work and expert work to design scenarios on all sides of the board. And even then, we fully support sending certain experts back to sharpen their pencils and see if maybe there isn't a better approach, a different approach, a less invasive or different approach to renovation. I think the committee saw two things. First of all, that the opportunity to come in substantially less than original estimates would maybe be difficult, but more importantly, that as we look towards getting this over the finish line with substantial private sector collaboration on the public campaign and in public engagement effort that'll be necessary, and then also to be able to try to aid city funding, public funding with private donations, the passion for that on the build a new distinctive structure is substantially higher than a renovate scenario. And we want to begin this project with an eye towards success and completion. In terms of the time schedule, I won't speak for organizations beyond our 12-member volunteer committee, but I can tell you that as leadership organizations in this community have laid out their top priorities for swift action to help transform our community in the years to come, this project in particular and initiatives around our regional core and around quality of life have absolutely bubbled to the very top and will have energy and collaborative resources behind them. So to the extent that is helpful to keeping things moving at the committee's recommended time schedule, we will certainly do what we can to help bring those private sector resources to bear, so the city isn't dragging all of its existing work along with this new and exciting endeavor.
So how much private resources do you believe can be raised?
I think that's a premature question to ask until we understand the vision for what we're going to create. It's kind of like it's premature to ask the community to evaluate, you know, the loss of an icon until they have some sort of vision for what might be the alternative value scenario. So I think part of the hope for speed of action in our recommendation is that we can get to a point sooner rather than later, given the long ramp-up to this point, where the community's got and where private donors and leaders in the community have a chance to evaluate the real possibilities. We don't even have a cocktail napkin to work off of yet, and with real ideas and real vision, we believe that's the time to go out and really get those questions answered of both leaders in the community and of the citizenry as a whole.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you very much for, you know, all the work you and the committee have done. Tell you guys have put hours and hours into it.
We are smarter in ways we never thought we would be smarter.
Just a couple of questions. First, did you mention seating, what's your projection on how many seats you would need?
The building program has capacity basically remaining flat from what we currently have in Concert Hall. Right now, that's about 2,200 seats. The configuration is really what's different. Modern performing arts facilities bring you forward more. You're not jammed back, you know, row ZZ 23, and that's how you get really capable performing arts facilities tucked into smaller spaces, because the audience is more interactive with the orchestra, with the musical theater production. Our committee expertise in those areas will tell you that, you know, engaging with what you're creating on the stage there is very important. So capacity would not be larger than we have, but the idea is that the audience might get more close to the stage itself, and there may be a divisibility of the main Concert Hall that allows to tuck it in and make it more intimate for certain performances and then blow it out for a big night at Music Theater going forward.
Did you guys do any kind of revenue predictions as to what kind of shows you would, that were missing now and you'd bring in now, and how much more money that would bring in?
We took a look at the homework that had been done, but given, we didn't have specific resources attached to doing unique research of our own. So we looked at two things. First of all, the data points you get, you know, the year we brought in that medium-sized version of Lion King, because we couldn't bring in the big version, and what that did for Century Two and for the community. But we've also looked out at other communities and what having these great shows come and run, and what having for our performing arts organizations, the opportunity to upsell their dedicated patrons of VIP experience and amenities that we can't currently offer today. So those, I wouldn't call those case studies so much as glimpses into our future, which we can examine as we look at the specific design and how the facility would interact with the community.
You know, whenever we went to the City to City last fall and went to Boise, Idaho, we'd asked them specifically, because they had this nice performing arts, how they funded it and how they went about it, and they had used private dollars to pay for it all. So I would, I would still like to know more information about how they did that, see if there was any kind of replication we could do here for that.
Yeah, and we've also, I mean, we just heard last week during the Greater Wichita Partnerships' annual meeting, how Omaha has done so much in their community with about a two-thirds private, one-third public. And I think the real is, the reality is that we, as a city, need to keep going on our journey and prove ourselves ready and able to bring projects like a new stadium and other transformational projects to fruition, and will continue to build that momentum. Frankly, we had a much more successful discussion with some of the potential philanthropic leaders in the community about a project that was managed by the public sector and might involve a public sector funding stream, but yet would be worthy of, you know, of substantial private participation. The fact that we got an arena built and that tax really did go away was a big factor. You know, we need to check off more of those boxes in terms of having a vision for excellence that folks can get on board with, a path forward that includes accountability and engagement by the citizenry. And then I think we'll be able to get much more solid answers about how private sector enthusiasm and their desire as individuals and employers to drive quality of life for their employees and for our community might really help take some of the burden off of the broad citizenry. But I think the citizenry has a role to play here, both with their voices and ultimately with their support.
Thanks again.
John, specifically regarding the operating expenses and anticipated revenues, don't we have that perform as part of the work that was done previously?
Yes. Yeah, we did a cost-benefit analysis. Also, one of the things in the new program is we're trying to solve the issue of currently the Wichita Symphony has to use Concert Hall stage to rehearse on. So that causes a lot of use of the stage that's not for audience and public participation. If we build a high-class rehearsal space where, again, the symphony could rehearse, that would not interfere with the performance going on at the same time, we now increase availability about 30%, and now the shows that you see that come in on Tuesday and leave on Thursday can now start coming in over the weekends, because we can actually book those back-to-back. We're currently that challenged, because we don't have that separate space for the symphony to do what they need to do in order to be the quality you have.
I wanted to follow up on the Vice Mayor's question about capacity.
Yes, ma'am.
So it must be that it's truly the limitations of the Performing Arts Center that are keeping us from getting these big shows. The capacity, we must be, have the capacity that...
We're fine on audience size. It is the ability to stage and produce the shows, from technology to wing space to fly space to backstage areas, that has been our constraint. If anyone's ever gone to Concert Hall and sat next to those four seats that have crime tape around them, because they had to put up a light stand, you know, so we make do and frankly, make do and create such an excellent product that you get to the end of the night forgetting that we made do, but we think that's ready for a step change.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Mary Beth, thank you. Thank you again to the committee, and we'll work on next steps ourselves, Robert.
And we'll be happy to step forward and be the private sector aides, so that you guys aren't carrying all those rocks alone.
All right.
Thank you very much for your time. Thank you, committee.
Robert, you want to carry us to the next project?
Sure, I sure will. Mayor, last year, we brought forward some observations and thoughts about fireworks and our 2018 program. You asked for us to go back with some thoughts, share those thoughts with the district advisory boards and bring back their feedback before you adopt a policy for 2019. And so I think we're ready to bring a conclusion to that discussion and seek direction from you on next steps. So with that, I'll turn it over to Chief Snow.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor and City Council members. Tammy Snow. Last year, the fire ordinance was changed to include an element of enforcement. Today, we're here to provide for you those findings and the results of that enforcement element, and also to provide a recommendation for 2019. To provide that information to you today will be Fire Marshal Stu Bevis.
Mayor and council, thanks, chief. As chief said, back in August, we presented this information in a workshop to the council, and then we went out to the DABs during the fall. Get the doors there.
Fireworks have been quieter.
We could have just combined the presentations. Right?
Wait for the mayor to be back here. Okay. So we presented the information from the enforcement to the DABs during the fall. And during this presentation is basically to review what we talked to them about and some of the recommendations coming from the DABs, and then what the police department and fire department talked about on what we're thinking about going forward and what we want to present to the council for ideas. The goals of going out to the DABs was to talk to the public about the enforcement efforts and the challenges that were faced, to provide the outcomes on the citations and the permit fees, and also look for ideas on how they want us to move forward in 2019. Just to recap, during this last year, we did have something different, where we had the teams going out during the third and the fourth of doing the enforcement. We did have an uptick in complaints this last year. We were, over 1,400 complaints called into the 911 complaint call, which was about a 57% increase from years in the past. They did add a day to that, so that sort of skews the numbers a little bit. We wrote just under 140 citations, which is an incredible amount more than we've ever done, obviously, because it's the first time with dedicated enforcement. We did, through the new ordinance, that we had the sales permits. We collected $48,000 in those permits, and that money was, went to the enforcement costs, which ended up being about $27,000, with a net revenue of just over $20,000. And last checked with municipal court, there was about $23,000 in fines collected from the citations that were written. So concerns that we had, that we brought to the council and brought back out to the DABs as well, was that staffing for this was a little bit of a challenge, more for fire than police, but it was a challenge to get enough staff to do this. Safety of the teams that were going out there was a very concerning issue. There weren't really backup available to assist the teams. In several instances, as the teams were doing their work, the situation got so volatile that they backed out and didn't end up issuing a citation, because even if they called for assistance, there was nobody there being able to, either from our enforcement teams or from officers out on the street, because they had their hands full with the normal call volume. One of the issues that we really snuck up and got is was the fire officers. These were normally teams of one police officer, one fire officer, and when we got into those volatile situations, that police officer had a dual job. Not only was he or she trying to defuse the situation, they were also having to be concerned about the safety of the fire officer, because they're not law enforcement officers, not trained in de-escalation or self-defense, they're not equipped or trained for any of that. And a lot of these situations were those kind of instances where the... for any of that. And a lot of these situations were those kind of instances where the public were not really being overly respectful, and they could have de-escalated into violence. During our enforcement, we did have many citizens still claim ignorance to the ordinance, even though the fire department, the police department, the mayor, we were all putting this out. The communication team did a great job putting information out, but we still had many people saying, "What ordinance?" And I'll remind you, actually, we didn't change what was illegal in the city. We just changed that we were enforcing it. So when we went out to the dabs and we were collecting, we collected the information and questions were asked and some of their thoughts, a lot of people, and this also from our social media, felt that leading up to the fourth was pretty good, that the use was less. But on the fourth, they felt it was just a war zone that it's always been in the past. In several dabs, there was a raise of hands, a little informal vote, "What do you think?" And it ended up being about 50/50 whether we should splash fireworks or make fireworks totally legal. It just never, it wasn't really decisive. Many dab members did bring up saying that we really need to stay on enforcement, that they felt that there was a significant change, and that they just encouraged us to look at ways to improve our enforcement efforts. And on tapping onto that is that really, we need more time, more years of doing this, just this is the first time, to see if maybe we can make a bigger impact and make this work better. There were still some suggestions, which we had had in the past as well, talking about reducing the number of days we allow for legal use of fireworks or the hours that we reduce it. As we've mentioned in the past, most of our complaints really come down to people being inconsiderate, either shooting after hours or not cleaning up after themselves. Very rarely is it a real fire concern. It's all about people not being good neighbors. Some people commented about the urban environment and the structures being too close for fireworks, and those were people that were really talking about, "We shouldn't have fireworks at all." There was some confusion, because we talk about our problems of us being on an island, and how it is in Andover and Mays and what have you, and there was confusion thinking that we're comparing ourselves to those smaller communities. And in fact, what we're saying is, because those smaller communities have their laws, it bleeds into our area, and whatever we do, it makes it very difficult for us, because no matter what we make illegal, they can just go walk across the street in some instances and have the stuff that's illegal in our city. Some other things that were brought up, some very insightful thoughts on the risks versus benefits, on whether the enforcement efforts were worth the risk to the officers that were doing the enforcement, whether we were really reducing safety issues inside the city, or we were just causing more issues with the enforcement officers. They did give us a good suggestion on maybe concentrating our enforcement a little bit differently. As you might recall, we had based this, when I said 22 teams, because we had 22 fire stations, we were doing it roughly on the response areas of each fire station, so we covered the city pretty well. Well, that became a problem as we went through, either with our staffing of our teams, or just as a reality of where the complaints were coming and where the issues were at. So one of the suggestions that was made at the dabs was to maybe concentrate, and also that would also help with some of our problems with safety, to where if we had two teams operating more in an area in hotspots that could be determined from normal complaint areas we've had, and also from data from our complaint calls last year, that maybe we would be able to enforce better and also provide better support and backup for the enforcement teams. We also, in several of the dabs, there was interest in having more police involvement in the enforcement, because they did recognize the hazards that were involved in this. In summary, as everybody here is well aware, we still had a big problem with the illegal use of fireworks during this last Fourth of July, even though we were very widely publicized that we were issuing citations. We did write a significant amount of citations. It's really unclear if that had a positive impact on the safety of the community. We were able to cover the cost of the enforcement with the permit fees that were collected, but we do recognize that the enforcement efforts that we had involved significant risk to the staff that are out there doing the work. Recommendations, after collecting the information from the dabs and meeting with the police department, seems like a lot of the talk was that maybe we should leave the ordinance unchanged. This is the first change in over 20 years, really, or significant change. And we need more data to really see if we're going to make a big impact, or we're able to make a bigger impact on the issue. Continue to focus on the July 3rd and 4th enforcement, and then maybe make some alterations to the plan to make it more effective, better support with more law enforcement to be able to maintain our officer's safety. And use the focus on area saturation, be able to look at certain areas where we have problems, to be able to address those problems a little bit more efficiently. The fire department and police department will work together on making decisions on how to organize and staff the teams for safer conditions and make the workflow a little bit smoother. And one of the other things, really a big piece of it is, and it came from the council leading up to this change before and then after, is concentrating our efforts on publicizing. I mentioned the media team did a lot of work last year to help us on publicizing our social media outlets. But with this saturation where we're talking about certain areas, we'd also look at working with PD's beat coordinators and using Fire Crews potentially, or community risk reduction staff, to be able to go out there and issue flyers, hand flyers out saying, "Remember, this is the law. We're going to be out here, especially in those areas that we're going to identify as some of our target areas for enforcement." With that, I'll stand for any questions.
So the only thing I would point out, and you said it once in your presentation, that we really didn't change anything. The only significant change is that we're enforcing what's been on the books for 20 years. And so I think it's important for the community to understand that we haven't changed the law, really. We've just simply changed the enforcement of what's on the books. Now, I continue to hear people out there that would like for us to give them a safe place to shoot fireworks. That wasn't part of any of the discussions you were involved in.
When that came up, sir, I think in most part, it was recognized that the enforcement of that would be nigh impossible. I mean, we can do that, and we talked about that before, but the question was, are people really going to leave their homes? Because right now, they're shooting them illegally at their homes anyway, and then go to a central location. I know that was a lot of the discussion when that did come up, because we did mention that.
Mayor, we took that to the dabs, too, if you remember. The dabs collectively argued against that, and felt that actually would create more risk than it was worth.
So I don't disagree. We need more than one year's worth of data. You know, so I'm fine with not changing too much next year, but just want to reiterate, we really haven't changed anything other than enforcement.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I think one of the things that did change this year was a better awareness of the ordinance. Captain Bevis talked a lot about the media team and the approach and the education that was out there. I said captain, sorry, chief. I demoted you. There was a lot of, much more awareness and publicity about the ordinance and enforcement. That really stepped up this year, because I noticed a significant difference the days leading up to the fourth. And I think the public got that, and in previous years, we hadn't done that kind of campaigns to bring them aware. So I think that was a big change this year as well, and it has to be a continual effort in order for us to continue to make strides. I think this year, we're going to have a challenge with the fourth being on a Thursday. I think we'll see more fireworks on the Friday and Saturday after the holiday than leading up to it. And so continuing that education, that public campaign, is critical.
I'm not trying to butter up the mayor, but I really think when the mayor was saying, "We will write you citations, we will write you citations," there was some social media flashback on that, but that's good, because it got their attention. And that's one thing that was different from the rest of the years.
I think we stopped our effort on the fifth, if I remember.
On the fourth.
On the fourth. So we'll have, we'll have to look at, I think Councilmember Fry brings up a good point, we'll have to look at the trailing days and determine whether or not we need to do something in that regard.
Other than noise complaints, are we measuring safety issues, whether it's catching the structure or something on fire, or whether, you know, someone's blowing a mortar off and gets hurt?
Yes, yeah, we have, that's all in the annual report that we put together, where we have the dollar loss due to fireworks. And, you know, this year, I think we reported around just under $50,000, but it's a skewed number, because that stops on the fifth. On the sixth, we have a $430,000 loss in northeast Wichita.
Okay.
So, but that was a bottle rocket, which is illegal in the entire state.
So were the incidents, was there any, any changes in doctor visits or anything like that?
The number was a little up this year, actually. But, you know, those things, but we do track that every year, and I have those. I don't have them completely memorized, but it is a thing that we look at. And like, we've had really low loss and then a pretty moderate injury case. Most of the time, our losses have been from disposal of fireworks. Last year and the year before, we had several fires that were due to people putting fireworks in their trash cans. One exciting event where the person had it in the back of their pickup driving down Kellogg, and it caught fire, full flaming combustion, so.
If we do look at a public place to do our fireworks, I think there's a park right around Catty Corner from the mayor's house. Or maybe not.
Mr. Mayor, I have some comments. First of all, I just want to thank the fire department for really listening to the dabs. At least I can see in the recommendations that you've brought forward, you really listened to at least my dab in terms of the things that they talked about. So thanks for that. You know, I think when we talk about safety, the statistics are very important, and those are how we measure it. But I also think that what I heard from the community is that people felt safer this year, because they saw, at least they perceived that leading up to the third and fourth, there were fewer fireworks shot off. Whether that's true or not, I don't know. But I, we have a lot of people that said that. And then just the enforcement, I think, made them feel safer. So I know, I know that we had some issues with firefighters not feeling as safe. I understand that. And I think you identified some ways to help with that. So I really think that this idea of, you know, we made a change, let's stay the course and make some tweaks to it is a really good idea. I also think when we're thinking about publicizing the ordinance, so we did a really good job this year, I thought, of getting the word out. But there must be places where we're not going to where the people that are violating this are. And I don't know where that is, but I know, you know, this idea of people saying, "I didn't know, I didn't even know we had an ordinance." You know, it's somehow, we're not getting to those people, and I don't know what that answer is, but we might think a little bit about, you know, going to where those people are. Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor. I didn't have too much to add outside of, I did agree with keeping up with the enforcement. I do believe, even though we were stretched thin, that we should stay citywide. That way, everybody knows that no matter where you are, if you're violating this, you still have the possibility of receiving a citation. And maybe it was finding a way to get more staff there. I know that was a struggle, but finding some creative way to do that. And then outside of that, to your point about a lot of our calls coming in later at night, just to put it out there, maybe we look at, on the fourth, there is a lifting of some restrictions, just to let folks have fun on the Fourth of July. I mean, that was a lot of what I've been hearing from a lot of millennials who want to pop their fireworks. And then at some time around 10:30 or 11, then that enforcement starts, because folks are trying to go to bed at that point. I think that also helps out with some of the aggression that we saw. I know that video that you showed. If it's after 11 o'clock and they're out there, I mean, they can be upset, but it is after 11, and they had all day to do whatever it is they wanted to do.
And that was one thing that the enforcement teams, especially the police officers, mentioned that writing citations after midnight, which is the current deadline, that's really simple, because they don't even have to look at the firework at that point. They don't have to show that it's one of the illegal items, because at that point, they're against the ordinance timeframe. So that is a little bit easier on that enforcement. And to your point about the, over the city, Chief Livingston and I are looking at the different data and where it is, and it does spread a little bit, but we would still be able to be responsive to an area and where we have the complaint calls, because that's what we ended up finding out, what we ended up doing. We were gravitating to those areas, because I had teams in areas where I'm driving around, chief, and I'm not finding anything. And the complaints were coming, so we moved them to the areas. And we also have target areas where people call us every year, and I have a running list. I know those neighborhoods that we're going to go through, and those would also be neighborhoods that we would want to canvas beforehand.
What point did Councilmember Kleikum? The idea behind this, this process is to, you know, you brought up the point about educating that people still don't know, is to do the pre-saturation, you know, where we would go out into that neighborhood and say, "Hey, you've been identified. We're going to canvass this area, provide them with flyers, knock door to door, and make sure they're well-educated, so that on the night that we show up, we hope that we've made that contact and they're educated enough to know that, hey, you're in violation."
Yeah, I think that's a really good idea. That's, you know, going to where they are, so.
I'll give Chief Livingston props on that. He sort of brought that up, the door-to-door flyers.
Could we also, in that education, just put somewhere like, be responsible and clean your fireworks up?
Yeah, you know, and that's, the last couple of years, that's been one of my biggest messages. Please don't throw them in your trash can or next to your shed, and please be considerate to your neighbors on sound and trash. But yeah, that is a big thing. I'm planning on meeting with the communications team to help sort of form those a little bit better this year, get somebody with more creativity than me on the, on the team.
I also want to mention, and Councilmember Klanden can join in here, too, I know that there is an organization looking at doing a laser light show on the Fourth of July, and we're hoping that maybe that will attract some folks to that, to that unique show, that maybe we'll get a little less of the noise.
Yeah, interesting that they, during the whole discussion at the Starlight Drive-In, you know, doing a laser light show out there for the Fourth of July, just to provide an alternative for people who don't like booms and fire and all that. So it'll be interesting to see.
Thank you. Mr. Vice Mayor, the last item we have is the, a discussion about our wireless communication master plan and some changes that are necessary to the plan as a result of actions with the legislature and changes in the, with the vendors. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Jennifer Magania, our city attorney.
Thank you, council and Mr. Manager. We wanted to just give a brief update in light of the fact that this item is going to be an agenda item on next week's agenda. You're going to be asked to vote on an update to the wireless master plan. We also want to provide a little bit of information and put into context the work that's going on in the city's right-of-ways. It's definitely a team approach, and we will talk a little bit more about that. First, I'm going to turn it over, though, to Scott Knabel, who will talk about the master plan update, which he will be presenting.
Thank you. As Jennifer mentioned, I'm Scott Knabel with the Metropolitan Area Planning Department. On your agenda for March 5th is an item to update our wireless communication master plan and its related regulatory processes that are established in our Unified Zoning Code. The wireless communication master plan and the associated regulations with it were first adopted by the city about 20 years ago. That, that plan, that 20-year-old plan has actually been updated a couple of times since then, but the, the main premise of that plan really has proven to be true, that as wireless communication has become a much more integral part of our everyday lives, that the facilities in which that transmission occurs have become shorter and more common in our community. The plan 20 years ago identified that we were going to go through a phase where there were many tall, but I shouldn't say many, few tall towers located at generally major shopping centers, those sorts of locations that would be the first phase of that, and that as wireless communication became more commonplace, and people started replacing their home phones with wireless phones, started using wireless devices as not just phones, but data devices as well, that those towers would become more frequent and shorter, and then eventually end up on existing and new poles in our right-of-way, light poles, electric poles, those sorts of things. And we've seen that come to fruition over the last 20 years. of things. And we've seen that come to fruition over the last 20 years. Reason we're bringing this to you right now is that in October of 2018, the Federal Communication Commission issued a declaratory ruling that addressed those towers in the right-of-way, indicating that, that we are in fact required to allow those sorts of facilities. The, the state of Kansas did a similar thing back in 2016 when it adopted the Kansas Wireless Sighting Act. The piece that is in the FCC declaratory ruling, which we talked about in more specifics lately, later, is that in order to regulate the aesthetics of those types of facilities in our right-of-way, we have to have published standards. Those standards have to be published by the middle of April of this year, and so that's why we're bringing this forward to you at this time. There is some sense of urgency in order to accomplish that. Those aesthetic standards will be in the wireless communication master plan, which has aesthetic standards in it now, but does not have, in, in staff's opinion, sufficient standards related to the appearance of these facilities in the right-of-way. Planning Commission reviewed the wireless communication master plan and the associated regulatory zoning items and unanimously recommended both for approval, which I mentioned will be presented to the City Council on March 5th. This wireless communication master plan and of course our zoning code is a, is a joint plan and joint code with the Sedgwick County. So, we will also be going to Sedgwick County on March 20th with the same item. The plan amendment addresses both the FCC ruling that I mentioned previously, as well as the Kansas Wireless Siting Act from 2016. That Wireless Siting Act removed all of our requirements regarding co-location and speculative facilities. Our current plan indicates that are you, if you are to build a wireless communication facility, you must first demonstrate that you can't go on an existing facility, that the facility you're proposing to build has a demonstrated wireless, is solving a demonstrated wireless communication need, and that if you build a new structure, you must allow other, other companies to locate their antennas on your structure. None of those three things are local governments allowed to do any longer. Those were all prohibited by the Kansas Wireless Siting Act in 2016. The new plan also establishes those guidelines for facilities that are located in the right-of-way, which are pretty specific regarding the types of facilities that, that should be located, regarding their height and appearance, location in relation to adjoining land uses and so forth. And then it also establishes in the Unified Zoning Code, the ability to modify what the code calls some supplementary use regulations that deal with setbacks and height and those sorts of things. The current code does not, does not allow the governing body to make those modifications, but it allows the staff to do that, which is an inefficient process where you get approval from the governing body to build the facility, and then you have to file a separate application for staff to modify some of the, some of the design standards. And so, we're proposing modifications to the code that would then allow that to occur in just one step, which speeds up the process. With that, I'll turn it back to Jennifer, I believe it is, to cover the remaining items.
Thank you, Scott. That was excellent summary. We just want to again talk about how the right-of-way is regulated in the city of Wichita. There's a lot going on in the right-of-way, and this is done in a team approach. The right-of-way, our goal is to regulate it, and our goal and our duty is to regulate it in, and administrate it in a competitively neutral manner. This is done in a team approach, and our team is led by internal auditor Lori Wolf, Assistant City Manager Dante Martin, representatives from Public Works, Finance, IT, and Law. And we meet regularly. The work of the committee goes beyond just the franchise application and renewal process, but looking at those applications and enforcement, meeting with potential providers, looking at following legislation, complying with federal law, and watching out for things like the upcoming 5G development, which Mike Maida will talk a little bit about. However, next week's item that we're talking about today does only talk about wireless communication. So, where do we get this authority? Our regulation of the city's right-of-way is derived from a state statute on franchise authority that provides that companies that provide services that use the right-of-way are required to enter into franchise agreements with the city. We have a clear process for that to occur. There is an application, staff review, negotiation on the agreement itself, and then finally council approval. When it gets executed, then the work shifts to, to city engineer and, and staff in terms of executing permits and the actual work and the supervision of those matters. We're currently negotiating to try to keep, our goal is to try to keep consistency across the board in fees. We're currently negotiating with energy companies for an across-the-board rate of 6% of grocery receipts. As far as our current agreements go, we have over 20 different agreements in place, and five we're working on that are pending. This includes everything from energy to telecommunications to our own city, water, sewer, and wastewater agreements. The city enters into, or city actually doesn't enter into agreement, but we are also responsible for franchise fees for the use of our own right-of-way. And together with all those entities and providers, this equates in about $47 million of annual revenue to the city. And the city's share of that is about $7 million. So, I think that's interesting. We do note that revenue in all categories, except for energy, have been declining in recent years and probably will continue to decline with the change away from cable and traditional telecom to other means of consumer video service. Then briefly, this year, it's, it's the time of year for legislation. We were somewhat surprised by some legislation that came from the wireless communications industry. It was somewhat unexpected, given that the cities across the state, including Wichita, have been working with wireless communication providers to enter into agreements, and the wireless providers tell us that that has not been the process, the process that we thought it was. They, they have submitted this legislation to the legislature to eliminate or to carve out the requirement that they are subject to a franchise agreement, unlike other utilities or providers. We have worked very, very closely with the legal municipalities, with other cities. Gary actually went up and testified in opposition to the test, to the, to the House bill, or to the Senate bill, excuse me. We're working very closely now on trying to find some compromise legislation that protects our, our rights under the state law to regulate the right-of-ways in a safe and appropriate manner. But that has been a challenge this year, and it's taken quite a bit of effort on the city's part to, to monitor that.
I'm sorry, Jennifer, who is the senator that introduced SB 68? Do you know?
The senator that introduced it, do we know?
Who carried that bill?
I don't know.
He is chair of the committee?
Senator Masterson is chair of the committee, yes. I don't know who sponsored it.
That helps, thanks.
Sure. And then just back to the declaratory ruling in terms of what, specifically what led us to the, to the wireless master plan update, as Scott talked about. This is something that is to facilitate or to drive the development of 5G. It has some protections for providers. It changes a little bit about the way we enforce and the way we collect fees, and so we're keeping an eye on that. It removes the city's ability to receive fees based on grocery receipts, and it puts shot clocks on applications. So, this process, there's, that process needs to be monitored even more carefully by staff to make sure that we comply with this order. It's interesting that the, the projections for 5G, and I think Michael will talk about more, suggest that there could be up to 60 new small antenna per square mile, or one every 300 to 600 feet. So, we'll see what happens. But that's part of what we do as a franchise team, look at things like this, and that's the most recent one that's applicable. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mike Maida, who has some interesting information to share. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Manager, during this transition, question for you. That $7 million a year that we capture a city revenue for franchise agreements, just for public consumption, what, what are those funds used for? And as that, if that were to go away, where would that leave us short?
I believe that money goes into the general fund. It first funds our activities for regulating the right-of-way, and there's significant amount of work that goes into doing that, and making sure that if the right-of-way is disturbed, that it's properly restored. And then the remainder is used in our operating budget.
Right, okay, perfect. Thank you.
So, Mike Maida, CIO. As Jennifer said, I get to talk, I guess, about the fund stuff, which actually is not. If, everybody, as Jennifer mentioned, every 300 to 600 feet. But everyone's talking about one item. There's not going to be one item, right? There's multiple carriers. All those carriers, when 5G pushes out, they're all going to expect that their boxes be placed. So, a normal block is about 325 feet. So, imagine that, right? According to some carriers, you won't, you won't notice this.
Yeah.
It, it will be, right, you won't observe that these things are there. But imagine this, every block.
Wow.
So, what happens with 5G that nobody's talking about? Now, don't get me wrong. Do we want 5G in this community? Absolutely, we do. It's, it's, it's a game changer, right? It's a disruptive technology. It provides so much benefit for industry, for business, for us as an entity. But what we're not talking about is, and I just threw that out, tech blight. That's what we're not talking about, right? It's not just Verizon. It's Verizon, AT&amp;T, T-Mobile, Sprint, Comcast, right? All, as we talked about, these, these are not, it's not just wireless anymore. When we were talking about 5G and streaming, that's how you're going to get your programming. It's not going to be a cable company, right? So, I think the thing that, that I wanted to introduce to you and at least get the thought process started is what happens when we have everyone coming to us asking, right, to put these on every pole that we've got? Traffic signals, light poles, right, buildings.
So, Mike, what's in the ordinance coming to us on March 5th that's going to allow us to regulate that?
I, I'm afraid I don't think there's.
So, I don't, I don't want to spend half an hour dwelling on it if there's nothing that's in the ordinance that allows us to regulate it.
Mayor, after Scott answers, I want to talk to you why we're introducing this, because I think we're going to seek direction for policy going forward.
So, the, the wireless communication master plan, actually, the policy document that is going to be presented to you on the 5th establishes the design criteria for the right-of-way. The regulation of that is actually done through the, the franchise process at this point. The things that it, it identifies that address what you see there is matching the antenna and other communication equipment to the color of the pole on which they're attached, mounting them as close to that pole as possible, as opposed to distribute it out from that pole, putting all of the wiring either immediately adjacent to the pole and running down the pole in conduit or in an underground situation. And then when these things are placed, restricting the height at which they can be placed to a height that's no more than 10% above existing structures. You can see that this installation is actually below the overall height of the structure, but oftentimes, they want to be on the very top of these facilities. And then placing the poles in such a location, such that they're not immediately in front of buildings, but at the kind of sideline, if you will, of adjoining properties, is so that people are not looking out their buildings at this type of location. Those are the, the primary design criteria that are in the plan that.
And we're allowed to do all of that?
Yes.
The, the policy piece of this is that we have assets, and the question is, do we make those assets available? And if we do, do we do it on a competitive basis? And probably the most significant asset that we have is the streetlight system that is operated and controlled by Westar with us involved as well. And we have the ability to put equipment on those streetlights and could go out for, if, if Westar is willing, we could go out for competitive proposals, and that asset, then that, that system would be allowed for antennas, which would help to minimize some of what you're seeing here. So, the question is whether or not council wants us to explore that. I like that because there's probably some, I think having the competition in the marketplace would allow us to pick up benefits, maybe have us an early adopter of 5G, but do it in a way that maybe controls some of the visual pollution, so to speak. And I think we could probably get some concessions for providing service to areas of the community that are underrepresented right now, or where we have, you know, concerns about digital equity, so.
But does SB 68 take all of that away?
No, the, I'm glad you asked that, Mayor. That's a good question. SB 68 takes us out, would take us out of the franchise business, but it would allow us to negotiate a small-cell deployment agreement, I believe. And so, the question is, what will we be allowed to put in that? But I think we're going to ask for a lot of the same controls that would be necessary to keep from a proliferation of this every block. We, it's, all the other things that you heard today, we still have to be quick in terms of our response to applications, and, but I think if, that's what the next step is, if that is approved by the legislature and the governor signs that bill, we will need to come up with a format for that agreement that the council agrees to going into it, so we treat all carriers the same.
Okay. Thank you.
That's all we have, Mayor?
Well, I had a question on that. So, looking at the slide, these design standards must be, I guess, adopted by April 14th. I have some friends who've worked for companies, I won't name, that they have these towers or whatnot and things that look like trees, and you really can't tell that it's there, or it blends in off the highway with something, and it's not looking like that. And if we use our infrastructure in the community, there's one part of town that definitely could use some 5G service, but already has horrible-looking poles in it. And this makes even more horrible-looking poles. So, how can we have design standards that maybe makes it look like a tree, something that blends in, that won't be ugly like that, or make the area that I'm talking about with ugly poles even worse?
Mike, tackle that question.
So, the, the wireless plan does, does recognize what, what is called a disguised facility, which would, you know, make, make it look like something else. In terms of the, the recommended approach for the right-of-way, what we're really recommending is, is that you make the antennas look like an integral part of the pole that they're already on. And one of the things that I failed to mention is, is that it also recommends that if antennas are to be installed in the right-of-way, they should first be installed on a pole that's already there, and not add a pole just for the sole purpose of a wireless communication facility. Then, when you pick that pole that you're putting it on, and poles look different, light poles look different than electric poles, designing the antenna and wiring and so forth to integrate into that pole so that it's not as visible as what you see right here.
Okay. I, I would just have to see it. I mean, you know, if, if I'm looking at 105-foot pole now, that is huge, and then there's other poles around, and then I start adding stuff like that, and I have 105-foot pole that just, blight, I think, is definitely a nice term for something like that. So, I would like to see some form of graphic of what it might look like first.
Sure. And, and actually, we will present, that is part of our presentation next week.
Just a reminder, the council delayed the, you know, some action on this probably over a year ago because of complaints we were getting from private developers and from residents as they started to deploy the last generation of. residents as they started to deploy the last generation of antennas. So with the proliferation of antennas, that's probably going to be even a greater issue, obviously not just here, but in communities around the country. So I think there may be a backlash to some of the efforts that have come through FCC and state legislature. But it's been difficult in dealing with the state legislation, because it's being lobbied by the national firms and their attorneys outside of Kansas. And they were trying to, I think, really implement a one-size-fits-all approach. You know, we have, I can't remember how many negotiated agreements we already have with wireless carriers, and those have been really good, and we've been able to negotiate those fairly quickly and meet their deadlines. But I think a lot of that effort's going to be voided, and then a matter of how much of that we can incorporate into these new small cell deployment agreements.
Does that legislation seem to have traction?
Sure does.
So on the House side, do we know what kind of traction it has, or just the Senate side?
It's been represented to us. That pretty much comes out of the Senate. We'll get through the House, but we're taking it one step at a time.
Do we know what happened yesterday on that Senate bill?
As of this morning, the Senate bill had not been debated on the floor.
Okay, so it wasn't debated yesterday, so we could still do some contacting of senators?
But it's pretty quick, I believe. Sometime this week is what they're anticipating.
Yeah, I even heard that it's being amended as we speak.
We've had language this morning that allows for this, these small cell deployment agreements. That wasn't in the bill originally.
I have just a couple of questions. So, just a point of clarification on 5G. The 2018 FCC declaratory ruling would allow us to regulate 5G also, like these other towers, right?
Well, the declaratory ruling actually doesn't give us the authority to regulate them, but what it does is it requires us to allow them in the right of way, the small cell facility. It does, if we establish aesthetic standards by April 14th of 2019, it allows us to implement those. And then if, and I'm not really sure how that's enforceable, but that's what the FCC rule says.
Okay, so the same things that you outlined here apply to 5G. I guess that's my question.
Yes.
We can, we have to allow them in the right of ways, but we can charge fees, and we can enforce design standards.
That's correct.
Even on the 5G technology, okay. And then on the wireless facilities master plan that we're going to see next week, are there any changes for wireless facilities on private property?
In terms of the design guidelines, there's not. In terms of the regulatory approach, it entirely changes, because our current standards say that we can require you to locate on an existing facility. We can require, if you build a facility, to allow others to locate on your facility. And we can require you to demonstrate that there is a communication need that you're meeting in order to build a new facility. None of those things are permitted under the current statute.
So that really means that if someone wants to put a wireless facility on private property, there's really nothing we can do other than recommend or require design guidelines?
Well, in terms of how it's permitted, if there is a zoning action that's required to allow it to be permitted, we have all of the tools that we have for any use in terms of that use's compatibility with the surrounding neighborhood, all of the things that are contained in the so-called golden factors is what we would have to base our decision on.
Okay. Thank you, Scott.
So I thought you mentioned earlier that under the declaratory ruling that we can't force co-location.
That's actually under the requirements of the state law, and that's correct. We cannot force co-location. Our current code, as it's written today, does require that, and that's what we'd be changing.
So we can't control whether there's a pole every 100 feet?
In terms of the, we wouldn't be requiring co-location. It's somewhat semantics.
If you can't require co-location, and you can't deny someone an opportunity to come in, you're going to end up with more poles. I'm just...
That potential is certainly there, and the design standards, as we've written them, have attempted to limit the number of poles by establishing design standards that encourage that approach. But yes, in terms of, in terms of the, our ability to require co-location, certainly the FCC regulation and the state law have significantly restricted that.
So the state law's the governing body that says we can't force co-location?
That, in terms of on private property, that's specifically listed, yes.
Is that in SB 68? Is that addressed?
No, that bill has to do with the requirement of a franchise agreement in order to locate in the right of way.
So I get it. But can't we ask for that change in SB 68 as one of the modifications that we want to encourage co-location, then?
We certainly could ask, yes.
That's a legitimate interest of the city. I believe that issue was debated pretty thoroughly by the legislature at the time we fought, you know, challenged that at the time. I don't sense that there is support or ability to pursue that at this point, based on the industry's position as it is.
So we believe we can encourage co-location by coming up with stricter design guidelines?
That's the best approach.
Gary, do you want to talk about the testimony you gave and how it was received?
I think that'd be helpful for Gary to fill in on the firsthand discussion he heard and saw.
And also, my question would be, have we reached out to some of the more influential landowners and developers in the area to inform them, are they informed, knowing that some of their property rights could be infringed by some of this legislation?
I sent something out to all of you just very recently about that.
Right, okay. I'll make sure that I look it up.
Gary Jansen, Public Works, addressed, Mr. Mayor, the question you asked specifically about the co-location. Senate Bill 68 references the requirements that are within the Wireless Sighting Act, which is what we worked really hard on and testified in opposition of in 2016. We're able to make some changes. The way we have interpreted the Wireless Sighting Act, it allows communities home rule authority to utilize what they had in place at the time that that legislation was passed. Our, and being competitively neutral throughout that, what we had in place encouraged co-location, it never said require. So far, all the agreements we have in place, and the 130 facilities we have in place across the city, it's worked really well to look at co-location first and foremost. The most damaging thing to that was the FCC declaratory ruling that said you cannot require co-location. And I know we're getting to a matter of semantics here and looking at what the law really means. I'm confident, and this is part of what we continue to testify about, that the rules we have in place in the Wireless Sighting Act, allowing you to look at home rule, still puts us in a good spot to encourage co-location. The aesthetic standards that are in place with the wireless master plan you'll see next week also help support that same thing, if that makes sense. Our biggest concern coming out of Senate Bill 68 was trying to understand why the wireless community wants to step out from under the franchise agreement language. It's still a mystery to me, as far as I can tell. The league has been in the middle of this. I spoke with several providers who could not have been more vague about it. I spoke to Senators Peterson and Solentrop. All they said is the cities need to get out of the way and let it happen. I tried to remind them that we're already, we are already making it happen, and we've had tremendous success, especially compared to a lot of other communities, on working together with them. I would tell you, one more quick thing that came up throughout this was a concern from the wireless community that municipalities and cities were holding them up, were stopping them from moving forward. And I'll give you the perfect example of why that's not true. City Council in November of 2017 approved a franchise agreement with Verizon Wireless for them to deploy their own facilities. They plan to deploy over 200 facilities across the city. That was November of 2017. We have not heard one word from them since November of 2017. And yet, the contention was, in that committee hearing in particular, is that the cities are getting on our way, they're stopping us from deploying, you need to make them step aside. That was a really, really big part of it.
So since 2017, Verizon hasn't done anything?
We haven't even heard back from them on anything, no plan whatsoever.
So would those senators that support this like 20 of these in their neighborhood?
That's a great question. When the Wireless Sighting Act was being negotiated in 2016, and that was what we had in our favor, I think when I testified at that point, because we were one of the first communities in the state to deploy small cell facilities, and we had some great examples. Councilmember Meisner was right in the middle of some of those on people saying, "Not in my backyard." But we established some really good things, and Scott talked about them, moving to commons areas, co-locating on light poles that worked great. Most people wouldn't even know where these facilities are at right now. So, you know, when I testified week before last, I basically told them, "Hey, there's not a problem here. They truly are looking for a solution for a problem that doesn't exist." We've got a good thing going, and it's working well. We've got franchise agreements in place, and it's really hard to imagine why they're trying to do what they're doing.
Any other questions, comments on this?
I guess I'm just frustrated that they can just put these facilities up wherever they want. And again, I already have a neighborhood that had facilities put up that they didn't know would look like this, and then you have this come in. That's just frustrating.
So make sure that all of our South Central delegation does a workshop by touring your neighborhood, because I get it, you know, 100-foot poles, you want to see what they look like, and they're not intrusive. Go to your Councilmember Johnson's neighborhood and see what people think of 100-foot poles in their front yard.
I went through there yesterday, and it's absolutely horrible.
For someone to say that we don't deserve to have any control over the aesthetics of our city is very nearsighted, and frustrating for all of us, because at the end of the day, they're not complaining to their state legislatures about those 100-foot poles parked 20 feet from their picture window. They're calling you up and asking you why you allowed that to happen.
And it's curious to me, and I may go just a little further here, but it's curious to me that so many of the senators and legislators who are very, very concerned about property rights would go this direction in infringing on so many people's property rights, just because a corporation is asking them to do it. And I'm a very big supporter of businesses and working with businesses, but we have to work together, and we have been doing that. And so this is so, so egregious.
We certainly care what our city looks like. Now, we spent some time on franchise agreements. Is there anything specifically addressing franchise agreements and what's proposed to come to us on March 5th? We're not addressing that at this point. All right. Any other? Does that take care of all the workshops? All right. We are finished for the day.